All right, well, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We are meeting remotely tonight due to the weather. So I'll just do a quick roll call vote. Ray?
Here.
Matt?
I'm here.
Andy?
Here.
Emery? Emery, I see that you took yourself off mute. I will let you know that we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I was just working on it. Sorry, I'm on someone else's computer.
No problem. Okay, so Emery is here and we are going to pass over the pledge allegiance and announcements. The first thing we're going to start with is the poll petition by National Grid, who has asked to postpone as well due to weather-related concerns, but we are going to read the legal notice, open the public hearing, and then close it to continue on to the 21st. So Andy, if you don't mind reading the legal notice?
The Select Board will hold a public hearing on the request of National Grid to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public roadway. Old Westboro Road. National Grid to install one SO pole on Old Westboro Road, beginning at a point approximately 340 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Estherbrook Road and continuing approximately 15 feet in a westerly direction. Installing 35C3 pole to increase the clearance to a service at 55 Old Westboro Road. The public hearing will be held on March 14th, 2023, in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center located at 30 Providence Road and via Zoom starting at 7:00 PM. The Zoom link will be posted on the March 14, 2023 Select Board Agenda. Purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to may attend in person or via Zoom. Grafton Select Board posted to the Town Bulletin Board and in the Grafton News on February 23rd, 2023, and March 2nd, 2023. And I move the board vote to open the public hearing.
Second?
Colleen, you're muted.
Dang, sorry. It's been a while. So motion made and seconded, so we have the public hearing open, and now I can take a motion to continue the public hearing on March 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those by roll call, Ray?
Hang on one second, Colleen.
Oh, I missed the roll call.
You didn't vote to open the public hearing, so do that first.
Listen, I'm just excited.
You are, you.
A while!
Is this, this gonna be a long meeting?
Oh, good enough. I'm gonna get in shape now. All right. So we'll do a roll call on opening the public hearing. Ray?
Me, I.
Matt?
After I.
Andy?
Jefferson, I.
Emery?
Fully I.
Roy, I. Okay, so the public hearing's open. Now I will take a motion to continue the public hearing on March 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by roll call, Ray?
Me, I.
Matt? Andy?
Jefferson, I.
Fully I.
Roy, I. Okay. So that's all taken care of. So first thing is to, we don't have any appointments, and we're going to review and discuss citizens petitions for the spring town meeting. So there was one citizen's petition in our package to review. Upon checking with the town clerk, the town clerk didn't have any information as to who submitted the citizen's petition, so there was nobody really to contact to come and talk to us about it. But the information is in the packet. Does the board have any comments or questions about it that they want to discuss?
Well, this is, this is a this is a road that's been there for forever almost. But it's got huge issues as far as layout and property line and buildings that were built more than likely on that road. And I mean on the road, on the layout. So, you know, this is really something that needs to go to legal or, you know, something to get this, to get this worked out. We can't accept the road or, or anything, even though it's a citizen's petition, we can't accept the road as it is. So it's, there's a lot of issues there.
To your point, I'm not sure we can accept a road through a citizen's petition. I think there's a process laid out in our Charter of Bylaws that explain how we have to do it as well, so we need to follow that.
Well, yeah, but they, they can go through a process, but this, this is, to be honest with you, this is a nightmare. There's this road and layout and, and everything that went along with it, so.
So this, um, this road is not unique. Uh, there's, there's a few in Grafton of these. I think we just need to outline what the proper process is to go through and, um, but I've never seen since I've been here a road like this, a private road that isn't like something, a newly developed neighborhood or something that's been taken as a public way. Have you, Ray?
Uh, no, no, nothing like this one. No, not at all. No, this was part of the, this was part of the shopping center that a house got built on, that it got paved from Hawthorne to Worcester Street and, you know, and it actually has a building built on it. So, so, and then not the house. So that's, that's where we went into a lot of issues now.
Got it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Moving on to vote on the Development Agreement Snow Road Local Initiative Program. I see we have John Greer and Jim Benacasa joining us as well from the proposal. Welcome, gentlemen. How are you?
Hi, good. How are you? I'm actually just calling. Steve was gonna join on too. Steve, are you there? Sorry. He should be joining on. Sorry about that. Um, so we did take a look at it. We did look at the, uh, I don't know if you can see me. Am I?
We can.
And we can hear you.
All right, perfect. Um, Jim Benacasa, obviously John Graniere is on with us as well. Yeah, Steve's calling me back. Let me have him join on. Is that okay? Do you have one other meeting that you could take and then we'll jump right on?
Okay. Yep, we can move right on to Town Administrator Annual Evaluation and come circle back to, or if he's gonna be quick, let's do the ARPA thing first. So Evan, did you or Emery, do you guys want to talk about the ARPA Committee project requests?
Sure, I can, I can lead off. With the, the, there was two additional requests that the ARPA Committee considered at their last meeting. Uh, one is to buy a senior center minivan. Uh, we were able to spec one out. Um, so that request is for $60,000. Um, it looks like the cost of the vehicle is gonna be $53,000. It's a plug-in hybrid minivan so that we get our charging stations and we can take advantage of, of having that onsite municipal center. And then I'll just give you the, the amounts and then Emery can talk about the project, but, um, we also agreed to fund some outdoor exercise equipment. And that, that request is for $50,000.
So that was something, I don't know, did we discuss this with Select Board yet? This particular item? No.
No, no, that I'm wrong.
So that was, uh, something I had been looking into in terms of, um, so exercise equipment that would be like for adults and set up in one of the parks, potentially. Well, we have a couple of ideas of which parks. So, you know, kind of a, um, a multi-station thing where there might be like five or six items. So maybe a pull-up bar or, I don't know if you've ever seen these um, in different parks. Certainly when I've traveled elsewhere, they're kind of everywhere. So something that could, we were talking a little bit about, you know, mental health and, and coming up with some things that might help in that realm. And I'm a huge proponent of, you know, exercise in terms of, you know, assisting with mental health. So, um, just something that would have folks out in a park environment, walking around, using this equipment. Uh, and we could start small and build on it. And, you know, I didn't bring or I didn't, I'm not prepared like with a, I did have some photos, uh, from one quote that I got. Uh, but just kind of like a little bit of a, like a square area with just a number of different stations.
Okay. And what would that leave in the ARPA funds to be distributed after that?
I think we're still, well Evan, you might have the numbers there. I think.
$69,256.41. So just drive, just drive 70K.
And that's not taking into account, or maybe it is Evan, correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, some of these things are coming in a little bit low?
Yeah, it does not, it does not do any accounting that if we have a project come in under, under.
So like the website was a little low, and I think the consultants maybe we think are a little low, so we need more.
Right, right.
All right, does the board have any questions or comments about either of these projects?
I'm in support of these. It makes a lot of sense. I've used that outdoor equipment in other towns. Um, I love it. Tends to be pretty, uh, simple and very durable. So something that lasts for a really long time. I'd be interested in, um, if this works out and it's, uh, something that we see getting used quite a bit to maybe see some of this equipment out on trails too.
Yeah, I think that came up in our ARPA meeting because we kind of, uh, we talked about a couple of areas, like narrowing it down to one area. But then what we did discuss is maybe this would be something that not only do we want it in North Grafton, maybe then we think about, you know, over in South Grafton and whatnot, to build on it to a point, yep.
Great idea.
Very nice. So I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the ARPA Committee's request to fund a van for the Grafton Senior Center.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do we want to do it all in one motion or are we gonna do it in two?
I don't, we had two. I didn't know if it, if it mattered.
That's all. All right, so, uh, any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Ray?
Me, I.
After I.
Andy?
Jefferson, I.
Emery?
Uh, fully I.
Roy, I. Okay, declare the motion carried. And the next motion for the exercise equipment?
Yep, I move the board vote to approve the ARPA Committee's request to fund outdoor exercise equipment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those by roll call, Ray?
Me, I.
After I.
Andy?
Jefferson, I.
Emery?
Fully I.
Roy, I. Declare the motion carried. Awesome. Uh, thanks for that hard work, guys, and go back to Snow Road. Are you guys ready to present now? I see Steve has. Perfect.
Yep, Steve's on with us now.
Thank you.
So thank you for continuing last meeting and also again to, to get Steve on with us. So we did take a look at, at the, um, at the last meeting, we talked about was the possibility of reducing down, um, 10% of the 25% down to a 60% median income. So really what that comes down to is it lowers the rents on the one bedroom down to 1122 a month, on a two-bedroom, 1198 a month, and on a three-bedroom, 1285 a month. We did run the numbers multiple ways. It's just, it, it's really not possible right now with the interest rates and with the construction costs. Um, we'd be losing a significant amount on these, um, on the 80% income that we're already gonna be doing. We're actually already losing a significant amount on those. So right now at 25% affordable, it really is costing us probably another 25% and even to get these things to form or out to be financeable and buildable, to actually get these projects built and done. So to reduce down another 10%, um, it's a, it's a really big difference. Um, the, we'll break down. It comes that, it really comes out to a value of costing us just on a, on a mortgage of 1.7 million to reduce that 10% down. The affordable number down. It would be a loss of 12,000, just over 12,000 a month yearly of 150,000. Um, and that's above and beyond, obviously, the loss that we're already taking at the 25% number. So running the numbers, I mean, the only other way to do it was to add more units or do something, but even adding units, the issue that we're having is obviously the more units we add, the more affordable units we're gonna be, we're gonna be creating also. Which then we're just snowball effect. Um, you know, as you guys know, with, with these, with these projects right now, a lot of them are getting permitted, but they're not all getting built. And it's just the, it's, it's, it's the interest rates and the construction costs. It's just like the perfect storm for us right now. You know, where, where, I think we're a little different is that we do plan and intend on, you know, we do permit these, we do build these, and we do keep these. Um, so it's not like we're intending to flip these, but we also need to make sure that we can finance them to get them built and done. So it's just, it's, it's it's just really impossible to get to, to reduce down that number anymore.
So just for clarity, um, did you, when you ran these numbers, did you keep it at 15%, 80%, and 10%, 60%, or did you do 25%? 80% and 10%, like an additional 10%?
So I did, I, we did 15% at the 80% and then 10% at the 60%.
Okay.
And just that 10%, like I said, it's, it's just, it's under 2 million is what the cost of that number is. Um, and that's above and beyond the loss of if we did those at 80%. It's just to reduce it down, you know, that much more. And like I said, even at the 80%, we're already losing money. So you're, it's, it's significant. I mean, it's, um,
What makes it even more problematic is the fact that, you know, our costs have not started, have not stopped increasing. So even though we ran those numbers today, when we build this project, which is about a year and a half, two years down the road, those numbers could be even significantly more and it, and it could price us right out of the market. I'm, I'm being solicited projects all the time that are sent to me for sale that I can't buy because I can't build. So that, that doesn't do anybody any good, you or us, any good to permit something that, that, that we don't want, that we don't like the project, or it's, it's mispriced, or doesn't have enough parking, or, you know, for a variety of reasons. There's projects that are sent to me that, that, that we're not interested in. We're not interested in. So we like this project. We like this location. Um, the 25% is, is already, it's already a struggle for these projects moving forward. We, we can make this work, even if we're, we're probably gonna have to supplement this. It's probably not gonna work out of the stagnate, but we look at, we're looking at more long-term. But to increase that affordable level over the long term just exacerbates the whole process. And we did, we didn't say no when you guys suggested it. We, we wanted to work with you guys. If we can make that work, we would come back and said, you know, we, we could have compromised some, but unfortunately the numbers are just, uh, they're just hard to, hard to hard to swallow.
Sure. So Steve, can you talk a little bit about, um, you made a, a comment about supplementing. Can you expand on that just a little bit?
That we have to inject cash into these projects here to, to, to be able to pay the mortgage.
Okay.
So that, that some of these, some of these developments may not even perform before us, you know, in short term. And obviously we don't wanna lose money year after year forever, but we, you know, we look at it, they're, they're good investments. Grafton's a great town. We like the town and we like that location. I think it's a, it's a great location for our residents to live near the amenities. You know, you, you could walk to the supermarket, you could walk to CVS. It, it's, it's a great location. Um, at the, at the other end, you're, you're not that far from the, from the MBTA station, from the train station. So we like the location. We think it'll work. Uh, but, you know, we, we, it's a tight numbers to work with us, honestly. And the whole instruction market, market has been very challenging the last two years. It's very challenging.
Yeah, we, we've experienced that. Um, I, I want to thank you guys for, um, looking at the numbers um, and running them and, um, it's definitely not the results that I wanted, but, um, personally as an individual board member, but I think, um, you know, the fact that you guys kind of did your homework. Um, is, is there anything you guys think you can do?
Well, the 20, we can do the 25%. We, we, we've agreed to give a, a monetary donation. We, we're, we're gonna be doing road improvements because it's problematic today and we know that, you know, we would make it a little bit more problematic, but even if we don't go in this area, you still have a problematic intersection there that, that we're gonna fix. So we're, we're not that away from, um, things that are obvious or things that need to be done. Uh, we're, we're acknowledging it and we're right up front saying we'll work with you. We'll get, we'll get it fixed. So we want the project to work. We want, you know, you guys suggested that the sidewalk, we, we, we agree. And then, uh, and the other side is we want to build a nice project that has nice amenities, you know, we, we incorporate nice amenities and developments because it's, it's a good long-term investment for us, but it's a good long-term for the, for the residents and it's a good asset for the community.
Sure.
Board members have any questions or comments after hearing the information? Okay. All right, well, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to enter into the Development Agreement with SJV Investments LLC regarding 14 Snow Road and authorize the chair to sign.
Done.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, uh, some quick comments for myself. Um, I am gonna be supporting this and I, I urge other board members to support it as well. This is not ideal by any means. Uh, my opinion, um, I would have liked to have seen more affordability in terms of AMI. But I understand where we're at. I do think there's significant benefit to, to the town um, in continuing to pass some of these along, uh, to the, um, the ZBA. Cause ultimately they're gonna have another crack at, um, addressing any issues that they have concerns about as well. Um, but I think this represents a significant move forward into continued, um, safe harbor, which I think is, uh, it's, it's one of, I think it should be one of Grafton's overarching goals when we consider these projects. Is to put ourselves comfortably into safe harbor, um, at 10% and beyond um, to where we can start having a much more control from a development process on which developments get um, built. Because we've had so much, so many issues with, uh, funding and, um, getting projects built and all of that kind of stuff. Um, and I'm thinking specifically about uh, the Pine Street development. I think it's in our benefit to, to move forward a couple of these projects and build up enough of a pipeline so that um, we're hedging our bets a little bit with which ones are gonna be developed. Um, so I'd urge other board members to, um, to support this.
Any further discussion? All right, by roll call, Ray?
Me, I.
Matt?
After I.
Andy?
Jefferson, I.
Emery?
Fully I.
Roy, I. Declare the motion carried. All right, thanks for coming in, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So up next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Evaluation. Um, so I'm just gonna open this up to some discussion, and if you guys don't mind, I wanted to kind of start off with some of my thoughts about it. I was really surprised at the score. I thought the score was low. It's actually lower than the score he received last year, which I just don't think is, is fair at all, um, considering the year he's had. And I have a, a suggestion with how to maybe address that. And we can talk about that later, but there's a couple of comments that I saw in there that if we're gonna vote on this and put this in, in to Evan's record, I don't feel comfortable voting on some of these comments. I'd want to see some of these comments amended or removed, or, you know, one of the comments was still grappling with the complexity of Grafton's budget. I don't feel that's a fair characterization at all. Grafton's budget was an entangled mess when Evan received it, and he's worked methodically and diligently to bring as much clarity and transparency to this budget process as we've ever seen. And he's done that with a team of people that's helping him by onboarding with ClearGov and Vadar and, you know, I just don't think that that's a really fair characterization, and I didn't see any other comments to align with that comment. So I just think it's a really big outlier. And little comments like that matter. You don't, you don't want to have that in there. Um, other comments that I, that showed to me was, um, the need to resolve surprise portions or surprising of the board. I, I found that to be an outlier too. I didn't see any other comments that aligned with that. And if you're showing up unprepared week after week and finding things surprising, that speaks more to how you're preparing as a member than it does to the town administrator's performance. And I feel, you know, that, that needs to be looked at too. So those are just some of my thoughts to leave this discussion. If anybody else has any other thoughts or comments?
Colleen, I, you know, um, I, I'm not gonna debate it at, uh, I'm not gonna debate things like this in an open meeting. So, you know, your, your, your opinion is well noted as, as, as to that you have a problem with some of these things. Um, I found it, I don't know, I don't remember what, what Evan's, uh, you know, number was last year. Um, I know what I, you know, I know that I gave him a, a uh, very high, what I call considered to be very high approval rating. Um, and other people may not consider that. It's, but, you know, I'm not gonna debate it in an open meeting as to why I wrote or why someone else wrote what they did. So.
I'm not, I'm not asking anyone to identify themselves. I don't know who wrote any of those comments, but when they don't align and all, if there's other comments all in one direction in the outliers, I think that that should be discussed. I don't, I don't think that that's necessarily how this should go. You know, in the past, we've had board members' whole review thrown out. I, I'm not suggesting that at all. I don't think that was right either. But I do think that there's discussion to be had, especially since we vote on this, and I don't feel comfortable voting as, on it as presented without some modification, you know, and one of my suggestions was gonna be throw out the highest and the lowest score and just take the average of the three middle scores. That'll get exactly the same score he had last year.
So we can't keep, you know, we went, we went through this before on, on the evaluation thing where we had three, you know, one, two, three, okay? Um, and then we went to one, two, three, four, and five, you know, which, which was really, which was really good. Um, but the document that was put out is the document that we, that, that all the board members, and, and I don't know who wrote what they wrote either. I've got it sent me. I have no idea. But the document is what the document is. People, people wrote what they thought was, you know, their, their evaluation of, um, of Evan and we're not going to change it as far as I'm concerned. We're, we're not gonna, you know, as they did when, when I was in high school, the scaled, you know, tests. But I'm not in favor of that at all. This is, this is what it is. I thought it was a really good, I thought it was a really good evaluation. I, I really did. I'm, and maybe it's just, maybe it's just what, you know, because uh, because I haven't always given a, you know, fives or threes or, or whatever it is, but, uh, I, I thought it was, I thought it was good. So but we can change it now. You want to change it next year, you can change it. You're not gonna change it now.
Uh, I, I somewhat agree with what Ray's saying, but I think, um, we can certainly discuss, um, what we would consider outliers, I suppose. Um, I think it's really important that individual members be given a voice, an independent voice that does not get altered in the process. That's something that's been problematic in the past, and I don't personally, I, I think it's a much better process if we have board members do it independently, and if there is an outlying comment, it will be obvious in, or if there's, if there's a one thing that we could talk about maybe is I, I wanted to perhaps discuss the, the range of scores. Because I don't think, you know, if I'm a, um, member of the public, I might be interested in that. What is the range? Are there, is there anybody that fundamentally was really unhappy with Evan? That when those got averaged in, um, got a little bit hidden. But I do think dissenting voices and people with different opinions is really important to give them the full voice of what their opinion is and not alter it. And not alter it. We can talk about, as Ray said, changing it next year, but. Board members are gonna have very different experiences and I think they're all valid. Just, just my opinion.
Emery? Yeah, Colleen, if I may, um I agree with uh with Matt and Ray. I think that I certainly stand behind my comments. They were consistent with the department head that I interviewed as well. I think that you're, you, uh so the comments, I guess, are separate. I guess that's what you're speaking to and if, like you, as Matt, as you said, if there's an outlier, when I read through it. It was obvious and so maybe that's that person's experience or, right, that's based on something or other. Um but obviously I would hope that Evan would take from the bulk of the comments. They were relatively positive in my opinion. And um, you know, in terms of the rating scale. Three represents a good performance, which is a good performance, right? And for the public to understand that I think anything below a three would be something that perhaps, you know, we would talk to Evan about. But good and above, three and above, he's performing his, his job, you know, as he should. Um so, you know, the, the, the rating scale gets a little funky because it's just so black and white, right? It's good, great. Outstanding. I don't know if you could put in a, you know, three point fives or if that just muddies it even more, but I think that the comments and, and the numbers should stand because that's. How it was presented to us. This was the valuation and I, I took it as such.
Any other comments?
Just, just one last comment. I, I'd be really um adamantly opposed to any kind of group commentary. That we've gotta discuss and agree on our comments. I really, really feel strongly that it's important to give individual board members. The language and the words and the comments that they have on their own.
So when that happens, what prevents somebody from just being nasty when this is tied to his, you know, contract and pays? Like anybody, any town administrator going forward. This is tied to salaries and compensation, so people are politicizing this process instead of just. What prevents that?
Nothing, nothing prevents it, Colleen. So, so he, he, here's the thing. Every town administrator and every town manager across the country. Okay, gets, can have, has the opportunity to have three to five new bosses. Every year or every other year. And you have no idea who's gonna win. You have no idea who's gonna win and come on and with a, you know, with a, a cross the bear. Or, or whatever it is. Been, and, and I've said this to Evan and I've said this to Will. Why people do this job? As a town administrator or, or assistant town administrator or a town manager is absolutely beyond me. Because you see the work that goes into it. And, and, and there's so much that goes into it. Why anybody would do it is, is beyond me, but. You could have five new bosses in a matter of two years and. Not everybody plays the, plays the game the same way. Now, you know, how many people actually have, have reviewed? Or had the opportunity to review employees? The, you know, there's not a lot of this, I, there's a bunch of people out there that have, I have many times. I know Matt has many times. But not everybody gets that opportunity. So, so you just go with, with what you got, you know, and, and. Unfortunately, it's, y- you can't stop anything like that. You, you can't stop anybody from saying their opinion. And that's, that's all you can do.
I think um we should give Evan the opportunity to respond to anything he wants to.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's perfectly um appropriate and, and makes a lot of sense. But, you know, the, the nature of the position is political, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And. I, I think it is what it is, you know, and, and when I look at, when I look at the end results. I, I think. Uh Evan comes off very well. This is a very positive, extremely positive. Uh review. That's just my opinion. I, I think it's. When I looked at the underlying numbers and how they all averaged out. It kinda made sense to me and there wasn't a huge amount of variation. You know, our, our low score was seventy, the high was in the nineties. It's, it's not. Different ballparks we're talking about in terms of the U-bows. I'm sensitive to his career, obviously, and his reputation and, and all of that, but. My, my impression was this was really a, a positive review. So I, I wouldn't look to change it much, if at all.
I thought it was as well. And I mean, I've done a lot of reviews and I've been reviewed by a lot of people and. I would say in terms of, I don't know, I'm hoping that you don't think that there's anything politicized in this review. That you're speaking of, you're speaking of maybe in the future, uh but I would hope that anyone that would come onto this role would have the professionalism to. To do this in an objective manner as I did.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
I mean, it feels like piling on at this point, but why not? Yeah, I, I agree with just about everything that's said. I think, I think what you're trying to do, Colleen, is, is well-intentioned. But, you know, doing it now feels more like numbers manipulation than, than anything so that we're, we're, you know, trying to get the. Desired outcome uh that we didn't receive in the test results. And I think everybody has. You know, shown that they agree that the outliers definitely stand out and they are outliers um and, and. You know, hindsight's always easier, so that I think the best we could do in this situation is next year, maybe we. Make sure we have a better discussion so we're aligned as to the, you know, kind of the value that we should assign to those. Five digits going across the board. I mean, I know. Inherently, there's, you know, uh you, you, you see what they're supposed to be. But it does seem like we all have some varying opinions as to, you know, what constitutes good, what constitutes great, you know, is. Is three being average a, a perfectly fine and acceptable score, you know, so maybe. We just need to be better in clarifying benchmarks next year before we start the process.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Alright, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the town administrator annual evaluation as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, by roll call vote. Ray?
You know.
After night.
Andy?
Only I.
Roy, I. Okay, declare the motion carry.
Colleen, you went on mute. Right after the motion carried, that was the last we heard.
Great, that's all I wanted to say. Um so now we can go on to lip proposal procedure policy. So we've approved a few lips at this point and we've kind of done it differently. Not differently, but we, we, I think we just need to commemorate the procedure we wanna use going forward. How many, how we're assigning someone to negotiate it is, are we gonna always um? Just use one person or could we potentially use two? Do we wanna meet in executive session at least once before, just? The process so all the board members can be um understand the process, I guess, said process six hundred times, so. So let's um start talking about it. Emery?
Yeah, I had a um a question about that, alright, comments, I suppose, uh particularly since I joined the board. You guys had already. You know, initiated the lip with the um, the Pleasant Street and the other property. So I wondered about having more than one person and, and just, you know, having perhaps, you know, different perspectives. I'm, you know, this isn't my area certainly, uh negotiating with, with real estate um models necessarily, but. Just a, maybe a, a different perspective and or, uh you know, does it have to be another select board member? I'm not, you know, entirely sure. And I, I would agree. That having a discussion in executive session and knowing that we're having that discussion. So when the, maybe there's been some negotiation and then there's something else that I wanna add. That would be good in my estimation that we would have some sort of back and forth so that that person who's doing the negotiation. Can keep that in mind as they, you know, go back. So yes to the two points, I suppose, that you're making.
Matt?
Uh just two quick ones. Um I'd also be in favor of um maybe a couple of board members. Uh we, we don't want it to be a subcommittee. Or unnecessarily complex, uh but I do, do think there was be some value in having multiple select board members involved. I will just relay from the Affordable Housing Trust as well, that in our recent meeting, they brought up the idea of being um included in the negotiations. And that process. Personally, I wouldn't be in favor of that, um but I just wanted to bring it to the select board for some discussion.
I was actually gonna ask about that. Um so that was a nice segue because I didn't know if that was something that we relied on. Uh you more as our affordable housing rep to, you know. Kinda, kinda brief each board and committee throughout that, or if, if, if there was value in. Involving the, the housing trust sooner. You know, e-. Even from a holistic approach is to discuss all the projects that they're currently thinking of and, and, you know, possibly. If there's prioritization in there. You know, I, I just feel like they're supposed to be. Kind of our, our resource and, and our experts, so I didn't know if there was a, a reason why. You know, we didn't involve them sooner or if that was something the board would be open to discussing, you know, I, like, if it's a timing thing or. It just hasn't been done that way in the past. Um, you know, just trying to.
We have involved um the housing trust uh in a couple of the discussions. But we've been inconsistent and I think that's part of the discussion that we're having on the policy. I think it's really important and actually there's uh some other policy. I think it's the housing policy. Which prescribes that the first place developers are supposed to go is the Affordable Housing Trust. So that initial presentation shouldn't be to the select board. It should be to the Affordable Housing Trust. My opinion is then the Affordable Housing Trust evaluates the project. If they've got particular thing that they wanna negotiate, are concerned about. Wanna emphasize in the negotiations or whatever, they should send that along via me. Or if they wanna meet with us, you know, I'd be happy with, with that as well, but uh they should provide basically their input. At that stage because they're the first uh body in, in Grafton to get a, a crack at. At a lip proposal. Then we take it and we negotiate. And, and the reason that I think it's important for us to negotiate is, is obviously this is an agreement between the municipality and the developer. Um and while it's related to affordable housing. Um and they should be advocating, they should have some involvement. I think the involvement that the Affordable Housing Trust has is at that early stage. And I certainly would respect and value input from the Affordable Housing Trust in terms of what their priorities are for these negotiations. Um I've been a little bit of a proxy for them and, and trying to get uh, you know, additional A M I relief, for example. So that's been my kind of perspective and my role in the discussions uh within the board context, but ultimately this is an agreement between the town. Um and the representatives and agents of the town are, are us, so. Uh, you know, but opinions will vary and uh, you know, if, if the rest of the board feels like there should be more. Uh substantial involvement from the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm completely open to that. I, I just. I guess I've just described what I thought should be the process.
I wonder if there's a way to do the presentations with a joint meeting, whether that means a select board goes to the Affordable Housing Trust or vice versa. Um I just don't think these developer, developers need to be presenting it. Twice when it's so early on in the process and they're gonna have so many other meetings going forward. Um so if there's a way to incorporate it that way, I would like to see that.
Well, I, I, I mean, I. I've negotiated a lot of things and, and in bringing more people to the negotiating side of the table doesn't always work well, but. But your pre-plan. Works wonders. So in other words. And, and I'm, I'm just gonna take Snow Road for, for example. Is that, you know, we, they came in, they gave us a proposal and everything like that. What we should do after that as a board. Is meet to discuss. What issues or what things that you'd like to see and, and go from there and do the same thing with affordable housing. Get their input on what they would like to see. And then sit down with the developer and negotiate the deal. But, but to bring multiple people to, to a negotiation really doesn't. It, it doesn't work, um because you really all have to be on the same page. But if you've got a document in front of you that has the list of everybody's wants, needs, issues. Then you can go through those. So, so bringing more people to the table usually causes. Issues. So, and, and this is, i- i- you know, these negotiations are something that we really need to. And, and I agree to, to refine and, and speed up the process. But we need to get more input prior to sitting down on them.
So would you agree that maybe during a joint meeting before the negotiation? So that we can even hear from the Affordable Housing Trust ourselves. We're not even waiting for them to send something off to us for us to have the presentation, things like that nature that just. Cut down a ton of time.
Yeah, it would.
Right. Andy?
Yeah, same. And, and I, I think. I don't know, maybe I understood it differently or, or it was just a, a miscommunication. I would, I'm, I'm with Ray in that I, I'm not in favor of adding. You know, a drastic amount of people in the negotiation. If, if we decided we want to expand that by a member. I'm open to that suggestion, but no, you know, it's like Ray said, it's, it's developing. That cohesive plan so that we're all on the same page going in. And I, I agreed with your point too. I was gonna suggest similarly that, you know, ma- instead, for, for everybody's time. Why don't we just make that a joint meeting with A H T because, you know, instead of them, instead of the builder having to go through this. Three or four times throughout, you know, the, the lifespan of the process. Let's, let's shorten that up, you know, um and whether we decide to. For both committees to discuss that, you know, in that open session or to give everybody time to, you know, kinda digest what was presented and come up with. You know, ultimately suggestions or, or discussion points for. A future meeting to be held, you know, in, in close proximity. I'm, I'm fine with that too.
Matt?
Um, yeah, I'd be in favor of the joint meeting. I think that makes a lot of sense uh to facilitate for a quicker process for the developers. Um and also for us to have more inclusive input in terms of uh going into the negotiation to Ray's point. That makes a lot of sense to me. I think uh I, I'll just um. Make one comment just in terms of the adding an additional board member. Uh one of the things that I uh experienced, I guess, was. Uh some commentary uh from uh some of the stakeholders uh including a. On some people on the board in terms of, did we get the, um the right value from the negotiation with the developer? So in order to drive better consensus. Among the board, it might make sense to have two members in the, at the negotiating table at least. Able to hear the back and forth, even if you had sort of a, a lead negotiator. That way you could uh have a little bit more uh hopefully more consensus. That hasn't been a huge problem for us so far, um but going into the approval of the endorsement of the lips. I think it might help a little bit, so.
Andy?
And I just wanna follow up that, I know, I know he's a thick-skinned individual, but none of this, none of, any of. My part of the discussion anyways is any knock on the negotiating that Ray has done to this point or, or, you know, have any, anything like that. Just one, that was apparent.
No, that, I don't, don't worry about that. I mean, I don't have a problem having two, having two board members. That's, that's fine. Um again, it's just, it's, it's, it's the prep that you do prior to getting. And then, you know, and, and that's the thing, so. Because, you know, we may have a, we even may have a, a, a project that comes before us. We say, hey, no. You know, great presentation, but we're not interested, so.
So how do you guys envision this being laid out in a, just like a lip policy for the board? So we just always can refer to it as the board changes over the years and we kinda set it up knowing that it might change as. We go through more lips and realize, oh, this would have made more sense. Um just so we know going forward, maybe for William to put something together for us to review and. Vote on. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
It does. I think it would help the developers too to have it written out, so they understand what the process is. So they understand what the process is.
Well, William, we were kind of all over the place talking about this. Is there anything, any clarity you need from us? Or do you think you'll be able to put a document together based off the conversation you heard?
I think, uh, using the recording, I'll be able to put something together.
Wonderful. All right. Is there any other, um, ideas or suggestions in this process that we've gone through that? We missed or anybody wants to add?
I guess I just want to emphasize, um, separate from the policy, um. The next time we get approached, let's just make sure that, um, we either have that joint meeting. With the Affordable Housing Trust for that initial meeting or that they get a presentation first. Um, that's, I just want to make sure that the, uh, the housing trust is involved. In the early stages.
The nice part is we have Amber who's on both, so we can always be, um.
There you go.
Communicating that way. Yep. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, we can move on to select board goals, which is nicely laid out for us in our packet. So how does everybody want to do this? Just go one by one, or does, you guys just want to start calling out some of your comments about? What's been presented or?
Uh, I can just. I think it looks. Nice, um. I thought that maybe you could. Combine a couple. Primarily ones that I'm, I was also particularly interested in, but perhaps like the land use with open space. I'm not sure if this matters to you all. How many goals there are or objectives, but just to try to, um. I guess have less in my. Was what I was thinking. And then additionally, the other one was, uh, you know, the two, the, the green options with the environmental initiatives, but. Again, uh, the wording was fine on the two. I just thought that perhaps those two could be combined, so four. Items going into two.
Can you say which four exactly?
Yeah, sure. So that just kind of combining and I could write up something if you wanted or however you want to go for it, but the, the land use one and the open space one, they're right. One above each other. Could probably be, you know, meshed into one goal or objective. And additionally, the, um, the two kind of environmental green charge ones. So that's the last one. In addition to the, um. Sorry, up above the, the visibility and green and electric options. It has like a little green heading on the left. So green and yellow could go together potentially, and then the two up above that were the open space ones. But I thought that I'm, I don't know if it was William or Evan, I thought that you captured, you know, what we spoke about in that meeting with all of these items quite well.
Okay. How does everybody feel about Amber's suggestion?
I don't have a problem with it.
Generally, I think less is more when it comes to goals. So if we can consolidate a little bit. I'm all for it.
Okay. Okay. Andy?
Um, we didn't discuss it at the goals meeting, but when we worked on our last, um. Round of feedback for the land acknowledgement, we discussed possibly getting something in there for, um. Increasing our relationship and outreach with our local indigenous communities. Um, is that something that we want to? Had I been better at this, I'd, uh, I'd have something for you tonight that we could, that I could say, you know, here's something we could easily insert. That's the way Colleen would have done it. Um, but, but I don't. So, um, is it something we want to try and come up with and, and add to or? Um, try and, and add to next year's goals. Um, I, I guess I'd just like to see how everyone, what people are open to and how they'd like to handle it.
Personally, I, I'd like to see that, yeah. And we've got, we've got model language, uh, with Tufts and, um. The Grafton Upton Railroad. So we can just take right from that.
Okay. Um, great suggestion and I definitely agree. I like the idea of adding that one to this year's goals. Um, just to circle back to Emery's, we're not combining all four into one. We're gonna combine two and two, right?
Correct.
Perfect, okay.
And then I just had one other one. You know, again, for me, goals, I know for me personally and at work, I'm very. Very specific, but, um. You know, the monitoring, the ARPA funds, like, is that a necessary one that the, the select board is going to oversee that ultimately anyway? And then we have to have our, um. You know, the folks that are working with us submit that to the state and, and to the, the federal government from my understanding. So I don't know if that one is actually necessary there. It's no problem having it, but again, to really focus in on, you know, greater goals for us. I think we could get rid of that one, but that's just my. Opinion.
Personally, I like leaving that one there because it keeps it on people's radars. It, it can't fall off the radar if it's. If it's right in front of your face, but I don't know how everybody else feels.
For me, that could go either way. It feels like a little bit more of a business as usual type of task that we could just. Get a couple of updates here at the year and that's probably enough. I don't know if it has to be a goal, but. I'm okay with it being on there too.
Yes, totally. I, I don't have strong feelings. Um, I, I. Agree with the point that, you know, pretty, with pretty much everything, um, most of it appropriated and, uh, you know, us needing to. Vote on any changes at this point and then, you know, for additional appropriations, um. You know, maybe we could pat ourselves on the back and say that one's done for the year.
All right. Any other questions or comments? About the document presented? Okay. So we'll just update those changes and then get it on the town website and work on Chipping Wader goals. Is that how everybody feels? Okay. Well, thank you, um, William, you're the, you're the one that put this document together, correct?
Uh, yeah, Evan and I worked on it together.
Thank you, William and Evan. It looks wonderful.
I didn't do a lot of a lot. I, I, I looked at it and gave him negative feedback just to keep him on his toes. That's pretty much it.
Ellie didn't like that comment. What, uh, what about our, um, strategic planning? Is that, that? That's not gonna be a goal? Because.
Uh, I don't know that you need to make it a goal, so I, I think I mentioned at one previous. Uh, board meeting, we're gonna be participating in that, uh, beta program come May.
Yep.
And, um, I think it's gonna work itself out. Matt, just. Cause. We're gonna take your goals, refine them into strategic plan, um. As a group, so I, I think. Think it's gonna happen whether you have it as a goal or not.
All right. All right. Any other questions or comments about the goals tonight? All right. Anybody have any select board reports? Town administrator report?
Yep, I just have a brief one. Just, Will, can you allow me to share the screen?
While, while Evan's getting that up, uh, I'll throw a thank you to finance committee for, um. The, the two annual budget review meetings that they've, they've hosted so far, top notch as always.
Yeah, while we're on the topic, um, I didn't catch the one from last Wednesday. Um, any. Important takeaways, I was able to catch one on the weekend, but, um.
I thought, I thought Wednesday's was really productive and they have a, a third one coming up tomorrow night where the, um. BBT will come in, the library is coming in and, um. That's about it.
Got it.
And that previous Wednesday was, um. School department.
Okay. Any, any concerns there, Evan?
Oh, not, not ones beyond what we've discussed of, of just the general, um. Funding woes to try to, try to keep up with, but otherwise. Nothing really, Jay, you know, delivers a great budget and a great presentation. And so I, I, I didn't have any, there's no surprises or strange takeaways for me or for anybody at that table, um. So I think that they're gonna, school department will get funded at what they've, what they've requested, which is that forty-three, four twenty-seven number, so.
Good. Okay.
But to Matt's point, it did spawn that we're gonna be doing a TRICOM meeting next week with finance committee and school committee, the full boards. Um, and Representative Meridian will be coming in. Uh, Senator Moore was busy that night, but he has an alternate date that he might be coming in as well, so, um. To try to advocate for more chapter seventy money, or at least let them know that we're not thrilled.
Yeah. Um, all right, so I'll just. Run into it here. So we already talked about the. Two updates I was gonna do as, as usual, and he was one step ahead of me there. Um, so we've got, uh, we've done the eighth and the eleventh, got the fifteenth coming up. Um, cherry sheet was released, so our chapter seventy, and I went over this last time. Um, is, is actually only point seven percent when you factor it out. And, uh, when you look at the data, even though it's a historic funding, most of that. Uh, funding goes to a hundred and six communities and the rest of the Commonwealth divides up the, the remaining balance, so. Um, that's why we're having, uh, Meridian and Warren trying to advocate for, for better funding on that. Um, we did finally receive our BBT assessment. They're going to be presenting on Wednesday, but their assessment is one point five, five million dollars. Uh, which is sixty thousand higher than anticipated, which runs our capacity down to a hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and six. Um, as it sits in ClearGov, um, I, I do wanna just continue to stress that. That number's based on our conservative revenue figures, um. And I do anticipate that in, in actuality, that number is. Is higher, probably closer to the four hundred thousand, uh, four hundred fifty thousand dollar. Um, range, however, that's just not how we budget, so we're gonna leave it, we're gonna leave it alone and that's, uh. That's okay by, by me. Um, and so, uh, in, in working with the school department and the finance committee, they seem. Okay with it as well, uh, the way we're approaching this, so. Um, I think we'll just continue doing what we're doing. So the only other things I have since we, we, it's only been a, a weekend, it's been a quick week. Um, we did get our rain barrel program, uh, up and running again. So if folks are interested in that, uh, you gotta order by April second. And you'll do a pickup day on April fifteenth. I have had a couple of people reach out to ask about alternate days. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, we want the bulk of the people to pick up on April fifteenth, but, um, you know, we can accommodate. You know, a few people here and there, uh, with the normal office hours of the, uh, highway department. Um, that cost is eighty-nine dollars per barrel, but we are subsidizing that with twenty-five dollars off from the first barrel that you order. Um, and then I'm gonna kick it over to William to talk about, about composting.
Yes, our composting program, uh, is finally, uh, getting off the ground. It's been a lot of logistics with black red composting and getting everything set up with the DPW for a collection day, but I think we are finally there. The information and the signup link is actually on our website right now on the homepage and on the select board page. We're starting our. Sort of publication blitz about that first thing tomorrow morning, including all the normal channels and a bulk mailer. Um, the cost of that is. I don't have the exact number, it's just around two hundred dollars for the entire year. Uh, in the first five hundred residents who sign up, get a free thirteen gallon totter and a year supply of liners. And once we had five hundred people, the cost of the yearly subscription does go down. So it should be exciting. It's been a lot of work and Marie's been a great help and I'm interested to see where it goes.
Okay. So I think that's all we have to, um, update you on for, for this, uh, week. And, uh. Give you another one next week.
Good work on the composting. It's a good benefit to Grafton, so great that you guys got it off the line.
Yeah, Will's done a lot of, a lot of work on that, um. And, uh, we're excited to, to have it across the finish line here, at least cross the starting line, let's put it that way.
All right, um. Anybody have any comments about correspondence? Okay, no resignations. Is there anybody here for a public comment? I don't see any hands.
Nope.
And we have a couple set of minutes to approve.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes from March seven, in March eight, twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Ray?
Need I?
Austin I.
Andy? Emery?
Holy I.
Roy I, declare the motion carried and we have no reason to go into executive session, so I can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By roll call, Ray?
Need I?
Matt?
Austin I.
Andy?
Jefferson I.
Emily I.
And Roy I. Good night, everybody.